Jason.
Tommy, if stuff would stop breaking.
Hi, Ange.
If stuff would stop breaking. And if Jim would decide to work for free, no problems.
I've got too much stuff in front of me here.
Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order?
Here.
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 Current.
Here.
Udis.
Here.
Kvaro.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion at second to approve the minutes from the September sixth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan.
Aye.
Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Public comments on agenda items only. None. We'll move on to the next approved bills as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan.
Aye.
Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Refer request to the planning commission for amendment to the zoning map made by Nathan and John Seneca.
I need a motion.
I will make a motion. I don't have the paper.
Kim, what is it? Do we even know what it is about?
Yes, they, down on their building on East Walnut Street, where the warehouse is, where they back the trucks in, they bought the property just to the east of that. They have to, they're looking to, at some point, tear down the house, put a swale in because they're getting water in their, in their building, and make some other improvements.
I got no issues with it. I just want to do say this thing, though. This will be the second time that we're putting something up for the planning commission and we're going to pay publication costs and everything, and not handle those items that we started back in April seventeenth. So, I'll be happy to support my vote to put it up there, but I'm just saying it right now. There will be no way I'll be voting for anything else to be approved that comes out of the planning commission if we don't actually look at those things first. That came from April seventeenth, because those are things that could potentially save somebody's life someday.
Okay. Let's, and if we have to do some one-on-one to get, to get it going, we will, Jason.
All right. I'll make a motion to refer the request to the planning commission for amendment to the zoning map made by Nathan and John Seneca.
Second.
Okay.
Second?
Yeah.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan.
Aye.
Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Number eight. Approved intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the City of Oglesby, DBA Oglesby Volunteer Ambulance Service.
I'll make a motion. We approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the City of Oglesby doing business as Oglesby Volunteer Ambulance Service.
Second.
Augurite.
What, so can I ask what this is before?
So, I'm sorry. So, we're enrolled in this program with Medicaid.
Oh, okay.
That allows us to get a much better reimbursement by being in this program. It's really weird the way it operates. We, they pay us, but then we have to pay money back, but in the long run, we're still deeps and bounds ahead of not being in the program.
Okay.
Don't we approve, we approve this more reg, we approve this regularly, right?
I think it's, I think it's annually.
It is.
Okay. I don't remember ever voting on this, so. I will go aye, though.
Do we get a second, Jason?
Yeah, Jason's second.
Second, and everybody voted yes. We're on number nine. Number nine.
Okay. This is approved request from We Are Oglesby to use city cement utility poles for scarecrow displays from October first through November fifth, twenty twenty-two, for business and residents along Walnut Street.
I will make a motion to approve We Are Oglesby's request.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan. Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Next one is place on file bids for construction of parking lot located at two thirty-eight East Walnut Street in Oglesby, Illinois. We had bids that were open this morning. We had two bidders. Both come in twenty-five to almost thirty thousand dollars higher than the estimate. Advanced Asphalt Company from Princeton turned a bid into seventy-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. SKI Seal Coating and Maintenance Incorporated of LaSalle turned in a bid of seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I would suggest that we table this and go out next spring for another bid.
I think we have to, do we have to reject bids? Is that what we have to do? Because more important, not just that they're twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars more, that they're almost double of what, what the engineering estimate was. So, that's why I think we're thinking about waiting till the spring.
All right. So, we're rejecting or table it?
What do you want to do? Reject or table?
Let's reject it.
I'll make a motion to reject the, all the bids for the Walnut Street parking lot.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan.
Aye.
Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Next is place on file bids for tree removal at the water waste treatment pla- excuse me. We got three companies that bid. Clean Cut Tree Service from Gray's Lake bid two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Homer Tree Service Incorporated of Lockport bid a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. And Sheer Tree Service bid two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
So.
Discussion.
So, speaking with the engineer a little bit on this, and my thoughts are, granted, we were estimating at a hundred and eight thousand dollars is what the engineering estimate was. I thought that was a little low. I would have been excited if we would have got close to that. It is a hundred and thirty-four thousand, so it is about twenty-five percent more than what we were hoping to pay. But the difference between this and the parking lot is we can, we have a couple of years before we have to start construction. But instead of waiting in the spring, my, my goal is to get everything shovel-ready, so we can be ready for a grant opportunity that's out there. And my concern is that by waiting six, seven, eight months for twenty-five thousand, that, that eight months could put us in jeopardy of losing a much bigger grant opportunity. So, my goal is to get us where we're permitted and everything completely ready, so that we're in the longest window possible before we have to start that construction, so we can look at all of our maximum financial options.
And for how low they are compared to the other two, I feel like we might as well just do it now.
I think so, too. And what I'd be curious to know is if, if we can use ARPA funds for it as well. I mean, we have more ARPA funds that's come in. This is a critical infrastructure piece that we need to do. I'd like to see if we could use it for that. I mean, either way, I really think it needs to get done.
I don't know why we couldn't, Jason.
We, we, in my report, I'll cover that.
Okay.
The funds that we got coming.
So, unless anybody's got any objections, I was gonna see if we can place it on file, then. All right. I'll make a motion to place on file the bid for tree removal at the wastewater treatment plant from Homer Tree Service Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-two and ninety-seven cents.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan.
Pardon?
All the bid, all of them.
Okay.
Oh, we place all on file, and then what, at the next meeting, we accept that specific one?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to place all bids on file for the tree removal at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan.
Aye.
Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Now, discuss and place on file quote for replacement of traffic light control box.
So, so this is really two parts. I think you guys probably have quotes from it without my notes on it, and then I got some more details today. So, there's really two traffic control issues we have here. There's one I'm going to recommend that we, we really need to solve, and the other's kind of for discussion. The first one we talked about was the light fixture down at the college there, on the way to the college. That one was hit by a lightning strike. We did get our information back, and it's ninety-nine point nine percent chance we're going to get it covered by insurance. We got some good stuff on that. So, I only have two quotes for it, but however, one of the quotes, they don't do installs. They're just parts only. The only one that actually has the parts and install is Clegg Perkins, who we do work with already right now. And that's for a total of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-six. The fact that we need it, it's just a flashing red light right now, and that it's covered by insurance, my recommendation is that we go ahead and place that quote on file. The other parts of the Traffic Control Corporation, there's a whole bunch of stuff in here. That's because my guys went to go get a whole bunch of different information from them. So, I gotta make sure I got the right part here. So, if you take a look at what's going on, this is the one that's out in front of Marquette. That one right there has, there's eight loops underground. I don't know when it was installed. I know the one at the college was installed in nineteen ninety-nine, so I'm not sure when the other one was. But four out of the eight loops are not functional right now. So, that's why there's been so many problems with it. Also, there's no battery backup system there, so every time there's a power hit, a lightning strike, or something like that, all the settings get wiped. So, right now, what the guys have been going down there, and I know there's been a lot of residents calling and complaining about the light system, but to get it to work, what happens is the main through fair is set for forty seconds, and then after that goes, it switches over, and then the cross ones go for fifteen seconds. And it just keeps switching back and forth because the sensors no longer work. So, it costs about six thousand dollars per sensor to repair or replace. There's four of them that are busted, but there's a new part, component in here, and our guys do have the, the skill that they could actually install it ourselves. That's a discussion. That's the one on the backside I have selected. It's called the Evo Radio, Evo Radar System for twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. That piece of equipment, our guys would be able to install to be able to get that thing up and running. It would not use the loops anymore. It uses a different system that uses some like infrared camera thing to tell when cars are there. So, that one's not covered by insurance. So, I didn't know what people thought about that.
Well, I know they're not going to last forever, but I know that does something with, is ARPA funds for it.
Can, can we even get parts?
So, parts for the current one, so this thing's been such a hodgepodge for the last ten years. Every time that something goes wrong with it and they try to fix it, our electric department has had to been buying parts off of eBay, for example, for that thing. But they can't fix the loops that are busted actually below. So, I think it might be time to pull the plug.
He said, I think the parts on this list, we approve them tonight, you can get them. They're in stock. We're not waiting.
That I, that I don't know the exact answer of what the stock is for it. I can find that out. We can always place on file, and I can get a more detailed answer of their, what the delivery time is.
I think we should do both.
I'd do two, Tommy.
Because the timing out there is just terrible when you're sitting there. There's no vehicles at that, or that intersection.
It is, because you're, you're sitting there waiting.
No, I can't stand it.
I've had people mad at me for a while, and I tell them, I said, we're working on it, and then today I find out that the loops are actually busted. It's just sitting on the timer no matter what. So, so for people to know, if you're sitting out there waiting, there is no sensor. It's simply waiting forty seconds, and you get your opportunity to turn. So, should we put both of these on file, then, if that's the case?
Put them both on file.
And then we'll see how we can pay for them later?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to place on file the quote from Clegg Perkins in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, and the quote from Traffic Control Corporation in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan. Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Discuss and take action regarding increased liquor licenses for potential liquor store. We have a request. In fact, we had two of them for the one remaining liquor license. We gave that away to the first one that completed all the paperwork. That's what the law says. I still have one out there. If the, if you're interested in increasing the number of liquor license, something that we need to discuss and make a determination. Also, what we need to do is, if somebody goes out of business, do we reduce that by one? So that no matter who comes, until we get down to a number, that the council would have to approve the request.
I do have some information that's new on this. I haven't had a chance to talk to you about, Mayor, that I got Saturday night. I met with Granville's mayor and one of their city council members, and talking with them about this subject, they purposely keep it at zero. Even, so if a bar closes, they close it down, and they keep it at zero. Their thought process on that is that they want to control who comes in. I'll be honest, I kind of like that idea, so that way, if there's ever another bar, or business, or restaurant, or whatever it is, that they come and present themselves to the council to see if that's what we want to expand into.
I agree.
I don't think it hurt, I don't think it hurts us.
No, I, I, I don't, and we can control, or the council, I should say, can control who gets the license. This way, you don't have any unsavory people applying and getting a license.
To get the state liquor license, you do have a background check and everything, though, too, so.
Yeah.
Usually that flags ninety-nine percent of those people.
Well, I know this came up when we had a whole bunch of bar owners in here. I think some of them, I can't remember the exact details on it. I don't have somebody to read the minutes off of that. But I thought they said something to the fact that they didn't want any more bar things coming up that was going to water down who all came.
That's what I understood, too, Jason.
Yeah. And again, I don't have a problem with like a complete new, but let's, again, I used the example of a brand-new business on Interstate thirty-nine because it's such a great, whether it's a Hooters, a Buffalo Wild Wings, or a major corporation restaurant. I think that'd be fantastic. But I don't know if there's a lot of value in making another bar-type atmosphere inside the city. It just waters down the current economic opportunities for our current bar owners.
Okay. So, basically, what I'm, what I'm understanding is what the council is, is, is saying is that right now, we have twenty? And if somebody gives up their license, then it would go to nineteen. And before then, they would have to come and have that person approved. I don't want to make it so difficult.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna ask, because like, so if someone sells their business, then doesn't that new person have to come ask for a liquor license, even though they're buying and?
That's a good question.
I would think, well, because didn't this problem came up with Cars and Ellys because they, they closed for such a long period of time that then they had to, whoever opened it back up, they had to re-
Yeah.
There was a period of time that went by.
What is, what is that period?
I can't remember. I want to say ninety days, but I can't remember.
I think that's reasonable.
I, I think maybe we should give some thought and research, so when we do it, we do it right. We don't put an undue burden on, on a present establishment. But on the same token, we want to take a look at who's coming in and what type of business they intend to operate.
And that might be a better question for the lawyer when he returns, because like, like you're saying, I hate to write something, and all of a sudden, there's a sale of a property, and then it no longer can operate. I would think there's a big difference between somebody selling an operating business to another person to take over verse a, a place completely shutting down and closing, and then getting renovated again five years later, or something like that. Or we're never opening up again, and that license goes to somebody else automatically.
Well, if we, if we drop it back down to the limit, then the council would have to approve it.
Yeah. I just don't, I don't, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that, but I don't know whether that's a disadvantage. I like the idea of any business owner that's going to come in that wants that kind of opportunity to come present themselves to the council.
You're going to devalue their property. If, let's say, one of our bars wants to sell, and the person buying that is not going to probably enter the agreement unless they know that they can obtain a liquor license. Why would they? So, now we're taking this property that's owned, being one.
We can't do that.
That's what I mean. So, I think ninety days is, is reasonable, because, let's face it, they put it up for sale. They're going to know they have a buyer, and that gives them ninety days to work out the details, which is three months long. That's plenty of time to seal a deal.
Well, I'm wondering if we even have to put it into, so we have something, I remember that there was some, remember there were, yeah, this was an open session, so I don't have to worry about it. Wasn't it Dailies they were upset because they changed the zoning on them? But what came out of it is if we, if, if somebody rebids the same property and they use it for the same purpose, it doesn't matter. They have the same use of, of the zoning. I would think the same thing would be in, in place for, if there's already an operating bar, restaurant, liquor license establishment, and it gets resold.
Let's, why don't we just kind of table it for now? Talk to our attorneys, draw up something that's fair and equitable for all parties.
Sounds good to me.
Need a motion and second.
I'll make a motion. We table it.
Second.
Augurite.
Aye.
Cullinan.
Aye.
Current.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Kvaro.
Aye. Next is discuss and take action regarding the quest, request to allow for Starve Rock Tropical Snow to operate in Oglesby during the summer of twenty twenty-three. I think maybe we've got this a little bit ahead of the horse, a card ahead of the horse. First of all, I'm not sure where she intends to operate.
Her original request was for the city parking lot.
Right here, okay. And that's snow cones, or that's what.
Snow cones, yeah.
But would, wouldn't we have to revise our ordinance? Because it's, what, ten, the fee is ten dollars for two weeks?
And I don't know the duration, what summer is considered for her.
Well, I don't know if we're going to have to supply her electricity. We've got to take, we need to work all that out before we step into this arena.
I can get more information from her.
Didn't in twenty twenty, we go through this and we revamped our food truck ordinance?
So, you?
Yeah, we did, but, but not for.
This doesn't count in the same category?
If you look in your packet, the original ordinance that was placed on file and discussed was tabled, and the minutes to that are in there. And it was never brought back on the agenda for any action.
We never approved that?
I guess not.
I thought we approved it.
I thought we did, too.
That's why I took it.
No, we, we did not.
Because it was tabled.
Well, I remember there was some controversy on it because I was concerned that the cost, the price was too high.
Right.
And I know, I know a lot of the, the businesses in town were like, hey, we don't want them coming because it's going to take away from ours. But we don't want to raise it so high to where you lose economic opportunity.
It was discussed and handled.
Well, the brick and mortar places are concerned if you let this in, what's going to happen? And, you know, rightly so.
You know, that tells me we need to obviously take a look at our, if, if we didn't approve it, which I thought we did, that means we need to bring this back up and take a look at it. And one of the things I was going to talk about back then.
It's in your packet, though.
Yeah, it is. It's back, last page, Jason.
With the, the minutes. I just copied and pasted the minutes.
Does it have the recommended version? Is that what it is now, or is that the recommended one we had back then?
What was placed on file for that council.
I think we have to be very careful, because I would, I personally would not be in favor of any food truck that would potentially take business from our food and mortar, or brick and mortar businesses away. I know that's no good if we open that door.
Right.
My thing is, what's to stop a taco truck from coming next week, you know?
That's when you would have.
You know, I remember that. I remember that. I think I said something to Angiaroni, because I said, hey, what if we want to be able to say we allow this food truck and this one, because this one brings something different, and he says, you don't want to do, you don't want to go down that road.
No. Something we need to be very careful.
Yeah.
Why don't we just leave it?
Just, just leave it.
Twenty, twenty-first day of September twenty twenty, so we are almost two years. Two days away from two years on it. I don't know much longer we want to leave it, Mayor.
Okay. I'm just going to move on. Is there any old business, and that's old enough.
I've, I've got something, Mayor, for old business. It's, it's just informational only. As you know, I approached the council a while back about getting lateral transfers within the police department established. The first part of that process is about to be completed. I want Pat to take a look at a couple of changes that were put in this MOU with the union. But once I do that, and this aside, our next step is to pass an ordinance allowing it, since the union approved it. Then after that, once we pass the ordinance, then it goes to the Police and Fire Commission to enact and to their rules and bylaws. I'd like to kind of try to get this on the fast track now, that the hardest step is done, getting it through the union. And I want to try to push this along, so I'm, I'm hoping that next meeting, I can have an ordinance on the agenda for you guys to approve establishing this. And then I'll be able to take that to Police and Fire Commission, hopefully, within the next, at their next meeting, they can get an act on their part. We do have chief, correct, around three or four interested parties for the laterals. Three. And how many people do we have that took out packets?
Three online and one other.
So, four total.
Two of them took packets. Four took packets, two returned.
Which is really good for us, if we can get this program up and going. So, I'm going to try to push it through. Just, just so you guys know.
The issue I see with getting in on the next agenda, that's the day that Pat comes back. Is the day of the next council.
That's when he actually comes back?
So, I have another attorney in that office.
I can hit it.
I can double-check on it, but if.
There, there, he already looked at the initial language here. There's very few changes
Okay.
that are in here. I think it's going to be, I don't think there's going to be an issue, but if we can figure something out. And my next one will be under Commissioner's report, so I'll do the next one, because it's, it's not really old.
Public comments? Having none, we'll go to Commissioner reports.
I have nothing to report tonight.
So, I don't know if you guys remember seeing an email that came through about the City of Oglesby police officers using the fitness facility at the college. I think when Randy started working there as a SRO, I think she started using the fitness center. There were some questions asked as to who's responsible if somebody gets hurt, or something like that. So, IBCC has approached us with an MOU that would allow the police officers to work out there, and it, it just basically says, a school resource officer, I guess, is this just with SRO?
I think it's all of them, because there was others that required, that actually went to the to man up, really, like, talking to other police officers.
I don't think, I think we need to clarify this, Chief, because the way I read it right now, as I look through it, it says, a school resource officer assigned to provide services for the benefit of IBCC shall be provided access to the IBCC Fitness Center outside of regular duty hours when off-duty, provided that the SRO first sign the IBCC Fitness Facility waiver form required for the use of the fitness center. So, maybe we need to do a little more work on this and make sure the intentions are what they're supposed to be. Okay.
Yeah. I would say that sounds weird, because if I'm, even though we have a primary person that does SRO, we have several other people that are qualified to be there, so technically, any cop could.
I would like it open to all of our officers, if possible. I think it'd be a great benefit for us if we can get use of that facility.
But don't they, don't we reimburse them for memberships right now?
We do.
So, we can take that away, or?
Off the top of my head, the amount, but we do, we do reimburse.
Do you guys know what that is?
So, I have to use it, I have to show for working out something that's here. And show for that, and then we reimburse for, for the line stage, or if you're worried.
Is it full reimbursement, Chief?
It is.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll, we'll bring that back up at a future meeting.
Okay.
I'll clarify on this. That's all I have, Mayor.
Cullen?
Collin?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, just a couple things, a couple reminders, um, street department, uh, seventeenth of October will be the branch clipping, uh, twenty-fourth, uh, next week will be the leaf vac. Hydrant flushing, uh, will be the seventeenth to twenty-first of October. And, uh, we have some of the EZ valves replaced already, but on the October fourth, the last fourteen-inch EZ valve is looking to get installed. Um, and once that gets wrapped up, we should have completed all of our, uh, isolation capabilities for if we ever have a problem on, on Walnut Street again. So in other words, the, after that date, hopefully the town won't ever have to shut down again if something like that happens. I still don't have a lot of the, I don't have the final pricing, obviously, for the pipes for the, the well, uh, but right now they're testing and recoding the pipes, and the word I got is most of the pipes are gonna be reusable. Um, so that's good. And then the last thing is the iron plant sandblasting and recoating is wrapping up. Once that, and then once that starts curing and everything like that, I can't remember how long that takes to cure, two, three weeks? And then after that's done, that's when we can, uh, start putting the resin in that we already have onboard and everything and wrap that up. So, other than that, that's all I got.
The one shot?
The one shot. Uh, I, okay, if you'd like. I don't, I don't like reporting on anything that is not planned to be an outage for anything, cause then people start freaking out.
Well, I'd rather tell them. Uh, the city has been notified that the second payment is part of the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, uh, in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents is on its way. Uh, I hope it gets here sooner than our, um, fire hydrant grant. Uh, the city received a quick claim deed transferring the front parcel of the Bukus property located at six-twenty South Columbia Avenue to the city. This has been a long drag-out section, and hopefully the back app will be resolved in the near future. I wanna thank the residents, volunteers, the city employees for making boots, brews, and barbecue a great success. Oglesby fifty-fifty tickets are on, on sale. The fifty-fifty started out with a fifty-eight-hundred-dollar, uh, jumpstart, uh, and hopefully we're looking to split at least twenty thousand dollars by, uh, Fun Fest. Uh, we have been trying to get a band concert schedule. Unfortunately, the weather has not been cooperating for the coming three weeks. A number of band members are involved in marching bands, competition, and are unavailable. We're looking for an indoor place to host a concert. Uh, I just mentioned, uh, Ameren Contractors will be working near or over Oglesby thirty-four five KV transmission line. Uh, should there be a fault or an accident, we may lose power. This is a safety issue, and, uh, we don't believe there will be any, hopefully there won't be any. But I just wanted to make people aware. The IMA tells us we are getting closer to finalizing our second feed agreement with Ameren. If we had that second feed, we wouldn't even be talking about this tonight.